Good evening, I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, November 27th, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll?
Fish Fine.
Here.
Laugh-In.
Here.
Letourneau.
Here.
Maroon.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chor-Tel. Testa. Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Servoni.
Here. Onto item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move if we approve or accept the consent agenda items A through H.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, items removed from the consent agenda, there are none. Onto item five, the public question and answer period. Who wants to go first? If you could approach the mic and give us your name and address for the record, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Robert DeMayo, 14 Marie Lane. I'm a 20-year, 21-year resident of town and I understand this council is not the decision-maker for the, for land use, but there's a number of us that would like to make a few comments relative to what the plan for the Bristol Myers site, and if that's okay with the chairman, like to proceed?
These 20 minutes are open for public discussion, so...
Okay, cool, great. Okay, so, we're obviously quite very concerned about what's being proposed up at the site. I don't know the extent to which the council's involved in the, in the level of detail and understanding of what's being proposed up there. You may be aware, but I'll take a minute. Relative to size and scope, what's being discussed and proposed is the complete demolition of the Bristol Myers building. Massive fill, cutting and filling of the wetland property. Construction of two warehouses that will end up being well beyond the footprint of the existing Bristol Myers property, in total 1.1 million square feet. For the record, that's about eight Home Depots and 20 football fields. This is larger than actually than the Amazon Fulfillment Center in North Haven, which many of you may be aware of, where they have the old Pratt &amp; Whitney site, which, and they also have the Army Corps of Engineers in there. They're developing a service road alongside of Route 5 to keep tractor-trailer traffic off Route 5 and keep the residents, school buses, et cetera, is very safe. I will share with you that the proposal that Claire Properties is making for the Bristol Myers site comes nowhere near that. It's a different, it's a different property, we all understand that. But what they're proposing for Carpenter Lane is pretty pathetic. Okay, Carpenter Lane is not a service road. Carpenter Lane is a little residential road, it's one of the main accesses to 250 to 300 homes behind this property. And, and the proposal, if you take a look at it, is to put significant tractor-trailers onto that roadway. Again, as you may be aware, these warehouses also are proposing, or this property development is being proposed with 245 loading docks and 150 tractor-trailer stalls. So, in effect, I use the word in effect, words in effect, one could say it's a tractor-trailer terminal. They're warehouses, we understand that. They will act very much like a tractor-trailer terminal to the average resident, school bus, relative to safety, roadway traffic and congestion, and noise. I know this council's very well aware of noise with the previous issues with Thurston Foods. My understanding is that property was, we're talking about 40? Early morning hours, max 40 or so trucks? We'd be talking about max, and that was over the ordinance, noise ordinance. This is 250 potential trucks, so, off the grid, I mean, totally massive. That's just a point of reference, and, you know, I just, the other thing I'd like to just articulate here is that this is not about, this is far from a "not in my backyard", okay? This just isn't that. It's not a "not in my backyard". This is massive. This is about fundamentally changing an entire area of town, and in particular, 250 to 300 residential properties. It's also about an applicant being reasonable and fitting in with the community. Not shoehorning as much commerce as possible into a site, pushing the limits and putting at risk the safety, health, and well-being of this community. Certainly, I think we all want financially viable and strong town. You guys are great at what you do, the mayor as well, you guys have kept us strong. A vacant property isn't ideal, we get that. But, filling it and thinking about at what cost we're filling that property, it's got to be mindful. We can't put the financial benefit above the other costs. And, in my judgment, and I think my fellow neighbors, the cost of this proposal, as it sits today, is far beyond the financial benefit, that anything that property can produce. And we are adamantly opposed to it, and we will, we will be representing ourselves on December 10th at the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I thank you for your time.
Certainly. Next? May I have your name and address for the record, please? For the record, when you speak into the microphone, can you give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, my name is Judy Singer, and, what was that? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors, chairman, my name is Judy Singer, and I am a recently retired, 35-year professional engineering geologist and hydrogeologist, government, federal and state, New York State, Connecticut, et cetera. I'm here to support the preservation, protection of our watershed, of the muddy river leading to our beloved Mackenzie Reservoir. I would also like to offer humbly and sincerely an opinion, professional opinion, about what I consider to be ill-advised on the part of the town to be considering the proposal, this monumental proposal, for the use of that property at the headwaters of this wonderful watershed that we need to protect. I don't have all the information, as a matter of fact, to my knowledge, I've tried to find out who the potential tenants would be of the owner of the property at Bristol Myers. We, if we don't have that information, then our application to inland wetlands, to planning and zoning, in my view, is invalidated and incomplete. We have to know. We've heard about warehouses, trucking, parking areas, regular vehicle parking areas. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Is it too loud?
Nope.
Okay. All right. But, I've been involved in this for, you know, my entire professional career, with oil spills, chemical spills, every imaginable contaminant. I'm well acquainted with trucking and what goes on. We don't know what's going to be in these untold numbers of trucks, but we do know if it's a warehouse with all this space, we need to know this. It's, we don't know who that's going to be. I've dealt with hazardous waste spill cleanup operators, hazardous waste just transporters, truckers. What if that's what we're dealing with? So we really have to know. So I think that, in and of itself, I feel that the applications are incomplete and invalidated. I would also like to just add the opinion that it seems very likely to me, if not completely certain, that in the, in the future, we can expect extremely serious storm events. And we've all experiencing that right here in Wallingford. Couple that together with the enormous site that potentially is proposed here, and the amount of potential vehicular traffic at a site, not just a road with traffic, we know 91 is there and 68, but that locus of untold numbers, at least 1,000 car park spaces, and whatever the number is for the trucks, depending on what kind of trucks they are, that coupled together, we're courting a disaster. So I would just ask you to imagine a cleanup of three and a half miles of the watershed of the muddy river to reach Mackenzie Reservoir, our drinking water supply. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, good evening commissioners, Mr. Mayor. My name is Patrick Heron. I, my address is 176 North Main Street, Suddington, Connecticut. I am an attorney. I represent my parents, Joseph and Virginia Heron, 206 High Hill Road. My parents moved to the High Hill Road property in 1980, they built their house there. They had a well at 180 feet initially, and when the CLMP substation went in and there was blasting, two years after the blasting happened, my parents' well collapsed, and now they had to drill down to 400 feet. So needless to say, my parents are extremely concerned about the proposal, and I'd like to echo the comments of our last speaker about the appalling lack of information that has come forth between the various councils of the town of Wallingford. I've watched the Inland Wetlands Commission hearings on YouTube, and it was four days of hearings, and the lack of detail after four days of hearings is simply astounding. I believe throughout the entire hearing, only two commissioners from the Inland and Wetlands Commission spoke. Nobody was asking any questions at all, and I think the lack of information has a lot of people from this town upset. They don't know what's going to happen, they don't know who the tenants are going to be, we don't even know who the general contractor is going to be. Claire Industries is simply a developer, they could simply turn around and sell this property to somebody else. We're not sure what the budget is. I've heard that the budget to complete construction is $210 million, that's just a rumor, I don't know that. So the lack of information is really astounding, and the lack of interest that some of the commissioners have in asking questions is simply astounding. I would say to you that I think it's your duty to represent the citizens and the residents of the town of Wallingford to the best of your ability, and to start asking some questions out of Claire Industries. One particular example, when the first hearing happened in front of the Wetlands Commission, and they had their soil scientist testify, he didn't even know that there was going to be a water turbidity problem with that site. He didn't know that there was red soil on that property because they hadn't done any testing. And to present an application of that size and this scope, and to propose to build two monumental monstrosities, two huge warehouses, and not to know that that was in the soil is simply negligence. It's inexcusable. Commissioner Vitale had to remind the applicant that there was a water turbidity problem. And I will say, the erosion control plan leaves a lot to be desired too. You know, during construction, when, when there's going to be rain, Spring Lake is going to be flooded with turbid water, and that's going to get in Mackenzie Lake. It's simply going to happen, and there is simply no plan to take that into account. And, I would like to say, given the size and scope of this project, the Wetlands Commission has only suggested a $300,000 bond. That's ridiculous in and of itself, it's simply inadequate. Two giant warehouses and there's only a $300,000 bond? It makes me question whether, you know, the town government is looking out for its citizens and is looking out to protect its water supply. The bond, planning and zoning is going to consider the bond issue, and the, the proposal from Claire Industries is that no further bond be issued in front of planning and zoning. Well, I would respectfully say that, you know, a $5 million bond would be appropriate in something like this. And on a final note, I would like to say that Erin O'Hare, our environmental planner, I thought she did an excellent job. She raised a lot of questions, she was the only person on Wetlands to ask any questions and to make substantive, real comments, and try and actually work with a plan that is reasonable. And after watching the hearings, I feel that a lot of her recommendations and a lot of her plans were simply ignored by the Wetlands Commission, and she was simply pushed aside, and the applicant's plan instead were accepted. And what the applicant's plan is, simply, we don't know what we're going to find until we start doing construction. And I would suggest to the town that that is simply unacceptable. The applicant needs to be better prepared, they need to do their homework, and they haven't done their homework thus far, and that is why a lot of people are here, and that is why a lot of people are opposing this measure. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Hillary Green, and I live at 6 Marie Lane with my husband. I'm from the other end of the spectrum, we only moved to Connecticut last year from the Denver, Colorado area, and so I'm brand new, and this is my first council meeting, so thank you for your time. I was not able to attend the meeting on the 14th, my husband did, I was away at an engineering conference out of town, and this evening I had the ability to come here, and what he explained to me, what most disturbed me was, there was a comment from the attorney representing the developer, and he stated that at the, I think it was towards the end of the meeting, that after very long three hours or so, or even over, that the neighbors' concerns were not quantifiable. I would probably agree with that, even though I didn't hear what everyone had to say, because from what I understand, the developers' statements are unquantifiable. They have no numbers, they have no specifics. What I'm most concerned here to ask you all tonight, since I am new to the town council procedures and things, is, we're going to go to the meeting on the 10th, and my neighbors are going to have wonderful thoughtful things to say, I'm sure the developers are going to answer those, but just like the last meeting, there's going to be a lot of back and forth and a lot of talk. I'm unsure, how do these things get documented so that we end up with a list of questions and concerns that both sides can see on paper, and what the answers to those are? To the best of the knowledge, there are some things we'll be guessing for the future, but we, we can't be asked to quantify our, our concerns if they can't quantify what they're even proposing. And from the previous speaker, I believe what I, what I heard was, was correct. So those are my concerns, is, I don't mind making better decisions, but we have no information to make those with. Thank you.
Gentleman in the back standing?
Good evening, my name is James Heilmann, I live on High Hill Road. What I have heard here tonight, I find so reminiscent of things that I'm so familiar with, particularly with the description of what took place with the Wetland Commission and the Wetland Officer, O'Hare. I'm sure she raised outstanding questions, I found that when I was on the commission, she always did that and did it very well. I do have major concerns with what is going on with this activity. It was a number of years ago, there was a huge activity planned for that area of Wallingford, just a little north and west of there, an auto auction, that was turned down because it was recognized as a thing that was inappropriate for the area, number one, and number two, it was a concern for water quality in the wetlands in the area. In consideration of what is going on here, that's pale in comparison, in magnitude. It wasn't very long ago, this town spent a great deal of money, I believe, with its reservoirs, in dredging them. Those reservoirs took a horrible hit when Bristol Myers was built. Spring Lake never, and never will recover, from the hit they took on the building of Bristol Myers. The water quality of the town is something that transcends you and me today in the present, it goes far beyond that, and that's something that is being horribly ignored. It was obviously ignored with the Wetlands Commission. To me, they were paralyzed with political fear. How could we stop this kind of a development? I mean, seriously? It's water quality here, and what you are planning to do up there, I heard that there might be some blasting minimal. To me, a more blasting would have been better than minimal. Minimal blasting means they can rip through the area there that is what preserves the water in those streams in those area during the times when it doesn't rain, i.e. summer. Now, every year was different, and this year was different than last year, and each year will be different. When they go and tear that whole mountain apart, far beyond what they did with Bristol Myers, they open up a potential there that is absolutely phenomenal. We know what happened when they built the little building at Bristol Myers. They're going to collapse that in the same materials that caused the horrible problem in the past, and now they're going to open up an even larger area, and for what Bristol Myers was research and development, that's what was put into that area. The concept is great, and it had auxiliary things that went with it, such as warehousing. Who would ever think the concept of research and development would be replaced with warehousing as a primary function? I don't know what the value of a warehouse is, but I can't imagine it's anything compared to the kind of facility that Bristol Myers provided for this town. It astounds me in how places like that, you know, a couple of years after their tax breaks, this, everything's gone. It astounds me that this town was so, how would we say it, slammed in its revenues from the state, because the state got itself in such horrible trouble. When do we stop giving up what we thought were important things and settle for something far less? That's what's going on in Wallingford. It's your town, you should be rattled by this. We talk about water quality. The people on High Hill Road will not be affected with water quality, they can do what they want there. It had a minimal effect up on the hill, where it will have effect, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, forever into the future, is the reservoir that serves the upper part of Wallingford. Who gets the waters from that part of the watershed? The Bristol Myers area is a major part of the Mackenzie watershed. It's a tiny watershed for a big reservoir system. That's a horrible combination to put the stress on it that is being enacted here. Why the Wetland Commission didn't ask questions, why every one of them didn't ask questions? It's astounding to me. Something that's got to be looked at, and something you got to pressure them, they have to be in fear of political pressure, but in the other direction. Thank you.
If, if I could, thank you. We're actually out of time for this portion of the meeting, just, can I get a show of hands as to how many more people want to speak? All right, three more people, and then we will move on. So, the gentleman in the burgundy shirt, if you...
I have too much history here. Ed Bradley, 2 Hampton Trail.
I didn't recognize you with your hat on, Mr. Bradley.
I sat up there and I, I understand your regulatory authority, that basically you don't have any, but you do appoint the board members, and both political parties do kind of put them up for nomination. But with, with that said, my concern, I mean, along with the people on High Hill, is the water quality, the aquifer, the wetlands. Downstream, I led the charge in 1984, opposing Bristol Myers with other residents. We fought them tooth and nail. And our concern was, as Jim Heilmann spoke, and also Judy Singer, who I served with on the Conservation Commission, put forth, it's a sensitive area. And in, if I can read a facts and findings back in the day in 1984, from DEP, and this again was in relation to the Bristol Myers project. The proposed project is located near the headwaters of the muddy river. A Class A stream which flows into Mackenzie Reservoir, and which provides potable water to the residents of Wallingford. The muddy river has been historically stocked with trout. The onsite water, water courses are part of a large, highly diversified wetland stream corridor system of regional importance. Subject Wetlands Water Course serves the following functions. Provide a highly diversified and high-quality wildlife habitat that is due to its large size, diverse vegetation, surrounding agricultural uses, and its association with the other large wetland water course complex to the south, Spring Lake, Mackenzie Reservoir. The Wetlands Water Course serves to maintain the quality of ground and surface waters, facilitate drainage control sediment, and mitigate flood control. That's far from the track fact today. We constantly get flooded in our area. The muddy river serves as a tributary to a public water supply, as well as providing recreational fishing. The Wetland Water Course enhance the overall environment quality of, of that area. Back in June of 1984, we had no problems up to June of 1984. That's when Research Parkway was going in, they were putting the sewer line for Bristol Myers in that zone, and at that time Bristol Myers was breaking ground. We had a rainstorm, and the mud, the red mud, you heard Jim Heilmann mention, came flowing down, inundated Spring Lake. The lake never recovered from that. It inundated so far, they had to shut down- It inundated so far, they had to shut down Mackenzie Reservoir and take water for the town from Pistapog Pond. The mayor of the town also had comments, and I'd like to read an article from there with some commentary at that time. And I'm reading just one section here. However, Mayor William W. Dickinson said he is worried that the Bristol Myers runoff problem may be a sign of future drainage problems at I-91 and Route 68 intersection. He was right, not only from that site, but even today, even today, we have problems. Cited the newly approved interchange district, which allows for major commercial development. The Midway Industrial Park is across from the area designated for the interchange district. If we can't control runoff now, what are we going to do when we have three or four sites there under construction, the mayor asked, who opposed the creation of the interchange Problems go on and on, but the current day problems are flooding. We have a lot of flooding in that area. Let me end. I was at the inland wetland meeting, and I had a concern that they passed the application based on changes, based on changes to the final site plan. Have they ever done that? I don't know.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Throne from Hemingway Drive. I am not a longtime Wallingford resident. I actually moved here from out of state for a job. My husband and I chose Wallingford. We kept choosing many places in Connecticut, but we chose here because we thought this was a wonderful town to raise our family. I'm a new resident of the High Hill area. We've been there for almost exactly one year, and I just wanted to voice my concerns over this proposal, not just for the neighborhood, but for the town in general. When the applicant was talking at the planning and zoning meeting, they kind of pleaded the fifth a lot, because they said, well, we don't know who our tenant is going to be. And they use that a lot, that we don't know how much traffic, because we don't know the tenant. But if you look at the building that they're proposing, it's 250 terminals or bays. If you had just four trucks come to each bay in one day, that's 1,000 trucks a day coming in and out of that complex. If you were to say that it'd be double that, eight trucks coming in a day, that's 2,000 trucks. Now, in moving to that area, I get a little annoyed, because we don't have any gas stations close, so I have to really be careful that I have gas in my car. And I understand you can't have a gas station there because it's in the watershed area. So when you think about 1,000 trucks a day, how much fuel are those carrying? And how much fuel are we bringing into that area? These big trucks, they have diesel spills. I was reading online, and in a fleet of trucks, you can expect on average a diesel spill rate of about 1% of your fleet. So if you have 1,000 trucks coming in a day, you know, even .1% of that, what is that? Each spill, on average, is about 100 gallons. So and then we're also relying on this unknown tenant to be honest and to be a good citizen and to report these spills and to clean them properly. I know the bond was set for 300,000. I don't know how much it costs to clean these up, but I can imagine it's quite costly. If you're driving down the interstate, you can see signs that say watershed area, you must report spills. If it's a traffic accident involving a tanker or a rollover, the police are there, they see a spill, they're going to help you report it. There's not going to be anyone on site. We're going to rely on the onus of these unknown tenants to report these kinds of spills. So I mean, as a town, we should all be concerned, because there's going to be spills. If you look at the plans, the path going up is very torturous, because they don't want to put in too many roads because of the watershed. So the trucks have to turn back and forth to get up there. You have forklifts driving around, you don't know what the loads are going to be. So the potential for spills and contaminations of our water is very high. Our water will be contaminated. So everybody needs to be on board with that before we agree to let this establishment be built here. The second concern is just general public safety. So tractor-trailers cause a disproportionate number of fatal accidents. They can't stop fast, you know, they start slow, people kind of drive erratically around them, their loads are heavy, sometimes they're unstable. 68 is a main thoroughfare to get our kids across town. I drive my daughter over to daycare on the other side of town, and we count school buses. We count 10, sometimes 12, 15. All those kids on that side of town get shipped over to the other side of town. So now you have 1,000 trucks, plus school buses, plus people commuting along that road. It just seems like a really dangerous combination. The road 68 is very curved and turned. By 91, it's wider, but if you go east or west of that, that's not meant for tractor-trailers, and you're going to see more traffic there. You're going to see more accidents as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Gray. I live on 14 Oxford Trail in Wallingford, and that's on Spring Lake. And I came tonight because I'm concerned for our environment, and this in many aspects. I didn't expect that I was going to talk, but I'm glad I have an opportunity, and I thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to say what's on my mind. And I'm just, I come from a place, although I have a good education and I have a lot of background in natural sciences, I'm coming tonight from a place of just an average citizen who lives in this town and has some basic concerns. And my concerns are for the environment. They're for the environment of my neighborhood, where our children play and where our kids grow up. They're for our environment where we have to travel on a daily basis, the air that we have to breathe, the water that we drink, the situations that we're put in contact with as we go up and down Route 68, or as we try to get out onto Route 68 from Williams. And if you've ever tried to do that on a morning or an evening rush hour, it's not a fun experiment. And having the tractor-trailers increase in that area is definitely something that I would not like to see, but I think I'm getting a little sidetracked here. I made a few notes, and I'll just take a minute to talk about the air pollution that the, if this project goes through, the number of vehicles coming through there is going to increase our air pollution, it's going to increase our congestion on those roadways. I live on Spring Lake, as I said earlier, and we've already been hit hard by upstream development. Spring Lake used to be a recreational lake where people would swim and fish and boat, and nowadays, that's really not possible for the most part. The upper third of that lake is merely inches deep, if that, because of the sediment that came down from Bristol Myers. The middle third of that lake where I live, I look down off my dock, and I can see 18 inches of water. And when I put my pilings in to stabilize that dock, I had to go through 18 inches of silt to get to the bottom to set those pilings in. And that's all silt that came down when Bristol Myers was constructed. We have, because of all that decreased area in the siltation, we have lots of invasive plants in there, and the quality of that water body and what we have to enjoy around it has been diminished significantly, significantly. One thing that I thought of when I heard this plan, it kind of reminds me of like when you hear about down south, Big Coal coming in, sweet talking some folks down in a West Virginia holler, how things are going to be good for them. And I really don't think that we're interested in being sold a warehouse. We don't need warehouses. We don't need trucks. We don't need pollution. That Bristol Myers facility was built at a significant cost, both to the environment, which we are still dealing with, and as far as material supplies and investment, et cetera, financially, I can't understand why anybody in their right mind would want to tear that down. That could be an amazing facility that could be repurposed in another fashion, and to tear it down and put in warehouses just seems like listening to Big Coal. And I don't buy that, and I don't understand why that should be even considered. So thank you for listening to me. Have a good evening.
All right, with that, I will close the public question and answer period. You are all welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. However, you are not compelled to stay for the rest of our meeting. And if you do leave at this time, I'd ask that you do so quietly so we can continue to conduct business. Thank you. Onto item six, discussion and possible action regarding local 1183 contract tentative agreement from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, from our Human Resources Department. Good evening, Mr. Hutt.
Good evening. Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director.
If I could ask you to take the conversation out into the hallway, I'd be grateful. Thank you. All right, Mr. Hutt, thank you for your patience.
Yes, good evening. I'm here tonight to seek your approval on a one-year extension of a collective bargaining agreement with the town in local 1183 of ASME Council 4. The duration of the contract, as I said, would be for one year, from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. And the one-year extension calls for a general wage increase of 1% and the inclusion of a savings clause in the contract, which during negotiations, we found it did not have. So I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions from the council for Mr. Hutt? Counselor Fishbein?
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
Just want to talk about on page three, Article 2.
Okay.
And has somebody reviewed that language to assure compliance with current law?
Yes. And I know where you're coming from, this is on the Janus decision.
Yes.
And when we were in negotiations, like we've been in negotiations with some of the board units, the mayor units, as well as the town units, when, you know, the decision came out, and both sides proposed language to deal with that issue. And essentially, what the town was looking to do was to strike the agency fee language. However, the unions in the board of bed, as well as the town, had their own proposals as well. And so it was decided that rather than, you know, a haggle over the language that's unenforceable, if the contract had a savings clause, we would fall upon that as being able to comply with Janus and not have to bargain over the language. Because some of the language that the unions are looking for would be increased time, and I'm sure, you know, perhaps you know, since the Janus decision has come out, unions have taken notice and want more face time and want to be able to, you know, represent to employees what they can actually do for them. Because now you can opt out of the union if you'd like. So in light of that, and after talking with Dennis, decided, look, rather than start haggling over, you know, getting into the weeds on the union's security clause, we'll adopt, and the union was agreeable to that, a savings clause to preserve not having employees be a member of the union in light of Janus.
Okay, so when you say a savings clause, savings clause is somewhere in this document, certainly nowhere near Article 2. The savings clause says that if any portion of this document is found to be invalid in the future, it doesn't invalidate the entire document, just that particular portion?
Correct.
Okay. So how many of the members of this union are lawyers?
I don't think there's any.
So how is one to figure out when the contract that they are bound by to work for the town says, "All employees within the bargaining unit shall become and remain members of the union, or pay a service fee equal to union dues as a condition of their continued employment, not later than 30 days after their date of hire," which we would agree is not the current law? In agency, it goes on in Section 1, "An agency fee payer may apply to ASME International Union for a rebate in accordance with the union's existing procedure," which I'm going to tell you that even before Janus, that language was illegal. Who's telling these employees of the town? Because we have management, we have the union. Who's telling the employees of the town that the savings clause applies to this? Is anyone?
We negotiated the language in good faith. You know, the information, the union was, the information was contained in the tentative agreement, which was given to the union, and it's their responsibility to, you know, review that with their attorneys if they so desire. And they came back, they signed the agreement, and so did the town.
Well, of course, they would sign it, because basically, it says to the employees of the town, "You're indentured slaves. You can't work for the town unless you're part of the union and you pay the union money." That's what it says. So of course, it's to the benefit of the union, they're going to approve that language if management doesn't fight for actual legal language. You know, it's common sense. If the contract says, "You give me money, even though I'm not entitled to the money," I'd like that language too, if I was the union or I was the recipient of the funds. And I'm just concerned, because we go through, you know, I've been up here like 10 years, we've been going through this, and, you know, you would think with a council that has six Republicans on it, that someone other than myself would be fighting for legal language. I just...
If I can add...
Yeah, sure.
That you might not be aware of this, is that we did have employees who sought advice from my office on how to opt out of the union. And you know that it's a primitive practice to attempt to restrain, coerce, or otherwise discourage employees from being a member of the union. So I have to walk a very tight rope in that situation. And so basically, we referred them to their union. But if they on their own produced a letter signed stating, "I no longer want union dues deducted," we honored that. And we have been, you know, provided notice by the state board of an informal hearing. The union filed an MPP saying that we can't do that. So that will be decided sometime in the beginning of December. But until then, and this, you know, worked on the, through some experienced labor lawyers on the board side too, as long as we have that, we won't touch this, and the union can't propose or enforce this language anyway. So until we know what happens with the MPP, that was the strategy we were going to take.
No, I understand. And the LRB puts, you know, restrictions on management, what you can do, and, you know, that kind of stuff. But I'm just speaking out for the employee who reads the document and has that question in their mind, you know, "Can I opt out of the union?" Well, the contract says I can't. That's, you know, that's what I'm governed by. So that's what they go by. And you know, you and I have had these discussions.
Yeah, no.
And there was certainly a period of time where, as you said, you were saying... And there was certainly a period of time where, as you said, you know, you were saying to the employee, "Well, the union has to make the decision," you know, which, you know, because Janus was new. But, you know, I'm really getting sick of this body approving illegal language. I understand the savings clause is in there, there's no direction, there's no cover sheet, none of that. And I got to tell you, that somebody's going to start to bring legal action about these things happening. So, I can't vote in favor of legal, illegal language. It's, I, you know, I took an oath to uphold the state and the federal constitution. Our Supreme Court has said that this is a violation of our First Amendment rights, and therefore, for me to approve this would be in violation of the oath that I have taken. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I defer. Thank you.
Mayor?
On that point, and, you know, obviously, everyone has the freedom to make up his or her own mind, but we're in a transition period. Clearly, the law changed with the Janus decision. There are existing contracts out there. And until the proper procedures are used to change those contracts, you have, have to, as Jim was saying, walk a very tight line. We need to honor both sides of this until ultimately, it's resolved. Ideally, there'd be more direction from the state of Connecticut to say, through the Labor Department, "By the way, any language to the contrary is null and void, and end of story." But we don't have anything coming out of the Labor Department, to my knowledge. And in fact, we have to go to the Labor Department for these interim issues over language and just trying to remove the language. So, it is a tight rope, but it's a transition period. These are existing contracts, the Janus decision has altered the landscape, and now it's sorting through how to rid ourselves of language that isn't appropriate, is illegal, and also honor our responsibilities under other state laws regarding the sanctity of bargain-for agreements, and not put ourselves in the position of violating some other statute or regulation. So, I think, given, the issue tonight is extending this contract for a year, and I believe it's a 1% wage increase. Yes, is there everything we like in the contract that's being extended? No. But given the transition period, given some other factors, as well as certainly a good mark in terms of, we've achieved a good mark in terms of wage increase, it's appropriate that, recognizing all of those deficiencies, we've got to move ahead with something that can't be solved in a short period of time, with even, as Mr. Hutt indicated, a pending MPP, a prohibited practice.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we both are looking to get to the same point of end, you know, the ending point, we're just going to take different paths to get there. And the whole basis of the MPP is, despite a union deuce card that was signed by an employee, if the employee withholds their authorization to take that deduction, we are taking the approach, we're going to stop those deductions, regardless of that union deuce card. And now, the state will come in and say, who's, who's right and who's wrong. So, I do agree with you, we are taking, you know, that approach, but as I said earlier, walking a tight rope of, I can't advise employees not to join a union or to join. And that's a very difficult thing to do, especially when they're asking you, "Should I do it?" It's like, I really can't advise you on that.
So, in the contract, new language is in Article 24, Section 12, that's on page 34. "If any provision of this agreement or the application of such provision to any person or circumstance shall be held invalid by a court or forum of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this agreement or the application of such provision to persons or circumstances other than those as to which it is held invalid shall not be affected thereby." That's the savings clause. When you apply that clause to Article II, it essentially nullifies it. So, no lawyer who has taken an oath here, if he happened to be in a position where he might have to vote in favor of this contract, would be violating his constitutional obligation. So, this is a one-year extension of an otherwise existing contract.
That's correct.
And provides for a 1% increase, a general wage increase, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's just because it's an extension of the last year of wage increase that's in the contract as it exists.
That's correct.
And we don't have to take action on this contract, it'll pass, what, December 23rd?
Yeah, the tentative agreement was signed on November 9th, so you have 44 days, you know, cumulatively, the 4th, 4th day, it becomes effective. If you take no action.
So, with no action, it becomes affection, it becomes effective. With a motion to approve, if that fails, it still becomes effective, only a motion to...
No, I think a motion to not approve takes us back to the bargaining table.
That's right, which would be a different motion. I said, a motion to approve, if it fails, wouldn't necessarily take this off the table. A motion to not approve...
Correct.
Would have to pass. Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the second bite. You know, I can respect the honeymoon period with regard to Janus, but, you know, that second sentence that I read here has been illegal for almost a decade. The Hudson case has procedures, Hudson United, in the Chicago Teachers case, Supreme Court gave a procedure as far as when you opt out of the union, how money is supposed to be done, there's supposed to be audits, you know, none of that is in here. So, that second sentence has been illegal for almost a decade. So, I don't, you know, I respect the honeymoon period, but I got to say, there's a lot of problems with this. You know, I filed a federal lawsuit almost a month ago on an issue surrounding this. And, you know, I just, I stand on my prior comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any comments from the public? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, to the Chair, to Attorney Fishbein. The question is, you said you had an allegiance to, you had sworn an oath on doing, to which, is it the town oath that you took?
Town and/or the state.
So, the town follows...
And as an attorney.
Well, I'm not talking about the attorney part, was it the state oath or the town oath, then?
Could be both.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Anything else from the Council? Counselor Letourneau?
Jim, with, with all the language that's in here, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, but all of this has been vetted by the union also. Because they brought this, I just want to clarify something, the union brought this to their membership and said that, in effect, they're okay. I understand what Counselor Fishbein is saying, that something might be illegal for 10 years, or, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I'm just going on, on his comments. But nevertheless, it was brought to the membership, and the membership approved it.
That's correct.
Now, it, could it change? It probably will, a year from now, when this contract comes due again, I'm sure there's going to be other language that's going to be negotiated, and some of the stuff might be taken out, other things might be added, we don't know what's coming down.
That's correct.
But, at that time also, it will be taken, it's not the town's position to take this to the employees, it is the union's position to take it to the employees, to make them understand the language.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, is, you know, it's, it's not us, it's the governing body's responsibility to bring it to the, to the employees, it's not your responsibility to bring it to the employees, it's your responsibility and the union's responsibility to negotiate this on behalf of the employees.
That's correct.
And if, 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 if they haven't done, if they haven't picked up in 10 years on whatever the illegal language was, that's not us, that's not you, that would be them.
That's correct.
If I may, I, I think Counselor Fishbein's point is, the union's representing the union, the town's representing the town, and from his perspective, nobody's representing the individual employee who doesn't want to be a member of the union. That's, to distinguish your point.
Okay, okay, so, so basically, what you're saying is, is the employee, well, that's the employee's prerogative to opt out of the union, and it's up to that employee to ask the question.
Mayor? Did you, you looked eager.
I was, I was just going to say that the employer has no obligation to inform employees of all their legal rights. I mean, that's, if we really have that duty, then we have a grossly understaffed town attorney's department, certainly where we can give advice to employees, we're willing to do that. But as was pointed out by Mr. Hutt, the laws are, are very difficult, and they need some reform in the state in light of the Janus decision. But nothing has occurred at the state level, so we're not aided in that way. Now, we're trying to juggle how to deal with a new federal pronouncement and, and measure that against what has been the historic interpretation and meaning of language in existing statutes.
Plus, if I can add, there has been an MPP filed against the town by the union because they didn't like what we did. And that is to preserve the intention of Janus.
Thank you. Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this tentative agreement between the town of Wallingford and local 1183, Council IV.
Second. Moved and seconded, was that Counselor Zandry with the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Barone?
Yes.
Worgenstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutt. Onto item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an appropriation of funds in the amount of $274,426. Do we, Mr. Bose, do we need a, do we need the account numbers in there?
No, you don't need to recall the account numbers. The line item memo would prevail.
Okay. Do you want B, too?
Why don't you, why don't you move them together, and if somebody wants them separated later, we can separate them.
And appropriate funds in the amount of $528,217.
Second. Moved seconded by Counselor Chortel. If we could have a little presentation here, it'd probably be helpful.
Good evening. This is...
Good evening, Mr. McCully.
Good evening. This is, this project is to renovate the former Police Storage Building that is, that was underneath the SCOW facilities on Washington Street, to the STEEP program. Involved with this will be the demolition of the former Civil Defense Building that is next to the SCOW building, that had severe roof damage. There's insurance funds that are coming from that. It also involves the demolition of the Choate School Boathouse, and it also involves the demolition of the current Kaplan Wooding property.
So, in that, in the Part B of the motion that Counselor Laffin made, $253,791 of that money is insurance proceeds, is that correct?
Yes. Public Works will be in charge of the demolition and the renovations.
And the improvements, so the area under the SCOW building is currently used, the last time I was in there, it was full of road signs and...
The police department, the police department have, over the course of the summer, constructed a new facility behind the police headquarters. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Chief Wright.
Good evening.
And so, you don't need that space under SCOW anymore?
Right, so the funding and the construction of the new storage building, which is just completed, we will have enough space to move all of our existing locations throughout town into one location, right? So, that's what our intent was.
So, that'll consolidate all of your storage. Where else did you have stuff stored?
So, other than underneath, directly underneath SCOW, we were kind of across the driveway there, where a lot of our signs were made. And part of this new storage building is a dedicated area for that work, up behind our spa station.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else before I throw you to the Council for questions? Mayor?
Well, I think representatives of SCOW and, and the STEM Academy perhaps can come
Hello. I'm Adriana Rodriguez.
And in what capacity are you in front of us?
I'm the interim executive director of SCOW.
Thank you.
And so, the space where formerly the police department used to store items will be used for STEM programming. Right now, Connecticut STEM Academy is using space at SCOW to facilitate many programs throughout the week and throughout Connecticut. So, the space in the back will be used mostly for STEM programming after school for children in youthful ages, and also SCOW will use it when needed. They've been really busy with programs, and we feel that that'll be a great space to really hold many programs they'll be using.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, did you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. So, just by way of historical perspective, the STEM program was actually in the building that was hit by the storm, so we were forced to move out of that building. That was our primary space for the STEM program that was semi-permanent at that time. The program has grown in size and scope, which really has kind of pushed the need to have a permanent or a defined space that would primarily allow us to house the materials that we use for the program, as much as it is to have programming space for groups to come in. We've been fortunate over the 20 years of the program to have it grow significantly with contributions from local organizations, local businesses, some grants that came through the National Educational, National Higher Education Foundation. It's allowed us to really broaden both what we deliver and allow for more participation. So, it is a really ideal space, that it will be a multipurpose space, it's not just for the STEM programming. We currently do STEM programming onsite at SCOW, so that allows us to move that in to that area that opens up space that SCOW can now use for more frequent events. Their youth programming has developed significantly over the past few years, but it also allows us to bring in people throughout the year. That's really one of the big advantages to us. So, we are located in many sites throughout the course of the year where this program runs. The library has been our place, Park and Recreation has been a location, SCOW has been a location, the Boys and Girls Club has been a location. So we've had a number of programs, uh, that we've kind of piecemealed together that have been very successful. And this affords us the opportunity, opportunity to consolidate that in one space, which will be very beneficial for us.
Thank you. And we've been given a floor plan, is that? Mr. McCully, are we going to use contractors to put that together or is that something that Public Works is going to do?
No, this, this will be, the entire project will be completed by a contractor.
Okay. Thank you, questions from the counselor I saw, uh.
Just, just so you're aware, there was a public bid, the contractor's been chosen, an architect drew up plans. Those plans were put out to public bid as stated and the contractor is ready to go, I guess, once we have money.
All right, thank you, Counselor Morganstein?
Yeah, hi, thank you, thank you all for being here. This, this is a great plan and a great investment for the town. I actually have two questions, um, that are maybe a little on the other side of things. Um, so Mr. McCully, um, Chief Wright, the, um, piece of this that has to do with having moved out things that were stored in this space. You may have, Mr. McCully, I hope, um, together with the, um, Plan of Conservation and Development, finally given some sort of a summary of where the town has used various spaces for storage. I don't know if that came ever to fruition that all of the departments were supposed to have provided. This is what we have in each and every building that the, that the, um, that the town owns and uses. Is that something that sounds familiar to either of you? Yeah. So the police chief, you, you have everything all in one place at this point?
We're not quite there yet. We're essentially moving out of, um, underneath SCOW and then from across the driveway as we speak.
Okay.
We'll be out of there, um, sooner rather than later.
So that's the list of your kind of peripheral places. And as far as the engineering department?
Public Works.
Or I'm sorry, Public Works.
Public Works, we store items in the carriage house. And we also store, as you know, we, the town performs, uh, evictions. So, uh, people who are evicted, their items are stored at, uh, Whirlwind Hill Barn. Until they're, they come and collect them, if they don't collect them, they, they go to auction or they go to the landfill.
The town owns a Whirlwind Hill Barn, yeah, see, I didn't know that, so.
Yeah, we have, if you go to Whirlwind Hill, uh, on your left, there's a huge barn there that we, we store items in from evictions.
Yeah, so it just reminded me to ask this question, which I would assume, um, Mr. Mayor, do we have that coherent list of that? Have we received that from the various departments?
I don't have, I don't have a current list.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, you know, a lot of departments are using various storage areas in this building. Um, I'm not sure, uh, what other departments are doing, but typically the areas they use for storage are on either in the building they're in or, or very close to it.
Such as the carriage house, which is a beautiful old building being used as storage. It just reminded me to bring up that question because we have some beautiful spaces, such as the carriage house, that really should be being used in a better fashion. And then, um, my other question had to do with the demolition of the boathouse. So we all remember that we made a trade with Choat, um, for a surface over road and we got a boathouse. And now, um, we're going to be tearing it down. What study was done as far as whether that building could be utilized? Would it be costing more to rehab that building or did we, did we make that decision with that sort of information?
The, the, the building was constructed, number one, uh, to store the skulls for rowing. When the, the dam broke, I think it was nineteen eighty-two, I started in eighty-three. Uh, the, the water receded and I believe it's almost a quarter of a mile now. So the boats would have to be walked to do any, uh, training for the crews. So Choat moved over to, they do their rowing, uh, in Middletown now. And the, the use of that building for what it is, it's surrounded, it did have a caretaker living in a house there. It is surrounded by ledge, so there's no parking. And I think that was explained, there's no parking there at all, like two or three cars, so. As far as a practical use and continue it for some sort of use for the town, I, I wouldn't recommend it. And I, I actually, my, it's my own opinion, the more of these satellite buildings we have, the more expensive they are to maintain. Yet if we can put everything in one building, it makes more sense.
So we've looked at the cost of keeping it secured from any vandals and problems?
We don't, we haven't had any problems there.
We've not had problems? And the cost, the portion of this that is that demolition, I'm sorry?
Yes, there will be three buildings, the total cost for the three buildings is a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. That would be the civil defense, as I mentioned, that's a, a masonry building. The Choat Boathouse and, uh, the old Kaplan-Wooding property building behind the police station.
Right, okay, thank you.
Counselors Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, everybody. So I have, I have a couple of questions and then, um, that I wanted to start with, just, just, uh, Mr. Bose, real quick. Just for my own edification, just the way that I read this all, we're not really, the only real money expenditure that we're doing here is the, is what we're expending in the transfer of the CRA distribution funds because the rest of it is being covered by the insurance, correct?
That's correct.
And with this utilization of the CRA funds on top of all the things we've already allocated, what is left in that account right now?
In the CRA fund, uh, I believe it's approximately three and a half million, give or take.
Okay.
Well, we are going through some projects that we have authorized, whether the council's authorized over the last few years. And if there's some balances hanging around, we're closing them and they stay within that fund, so.
Okay.
I would say right now it's in that ballpark.
So then the other, the other question that I, I have is, you know, I want to get a, a little bit better understanding of, of the, the area, the space area that we're going to be working with here is that it's going to be used by STEM and it's going to be used by, by SCOW. So I, I assume they're not necessarily, um, competing is the wrong word. When, when SCOW is utilizing and participating as part of any of the STEM activities, they're going to be in there doing STEM-related things. Will you also be doing something separately when STEM's not active?
If it's, if it's necessary, if we need the space, I think that's.
Right, so I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it from the investment point of view, you know, with, with, while these aren't new tax dollars, they're, you know, they're the CRA funds. So I mean, I like the idea that if we're going to fix it for the use of STEM, that, you know, it doesn't just sit idle if there's no program going on. If you guys, so you're, you're available, the space is available if you need it.
Yes, definitely, we plan to continue working together.
So, uh, just to clarify that, uh, what Adriana said is absolutely correct. So most of the items that we're putting in there besides the storage room area are set up and take down. It's all portable, nothing is put in there permanently. Um, so if they need a larger venue for an event, uh, whether that be a presentation or the band practicing or the dancers practicing, that space, or even a show, an event, that space becomes available. And it is not difficult to set up and break it down, most of the equipment sturdy, but it's light, easy to move. And there's space to put it in that space when we're not using it.
Okay, and then, and then I guess my, an ancillary question to that would be, I mean, it's a, it's a town building.
Correct.
That, you know, we've dedicated the use to, for, to SCOW for, I think it's a dollar a year. If, if there was some other town function, like, no, I'll just use your department for, let's just for the conference. If you needed that space for some reason, are you available, are you able to utilize that space?
I'm able to make the request.
Request for you.
And if it's available, then I think we would work that out. It's not dissimilar from what we do now.
Yeah, and I, and I just wanted to kind of, because I, I've gotten a lot of questions about why are we doing this in this one location? I go, well, it's, it's still a location that others can use with, and, you know, it, like in exchange, like we've got the parade grounds. The parade grounds are there, they come forward, an organization comes forward, they request permission to use, they can use it. So if your department or another department needed to request permission to use, they would be able to do it, I presume?
I presume they would too.
Mayor?
I just want to make everyone aware that the STEM Academy is sponsored by YSS.
Correct.
So it's, it's, that's all part of the Youth and Social Service Department offerings as far as programs.
So the, the significant element of that space, uh, from what we do on a design of programming is for after-school, summer and enhancement programs that go on after the school day. So we do not have a dedicated space, even at this point, to do that, other than a preschool group that we run Monday through Friday. That's the only dedicated space that we have access to. We have access to space, just as you described it, on a requested basis in the Park and Rec Department, which is where we're housed. So when it's available, we can use that space. And in fact, many of our STEM events have happened in that space over the course of the 20 years we've been running the program. We also use the library, as I mentioned before, Boys and Girls Club, other, other venues. So not only does this give us the opportunity to solidify where we're going to be, but it also provides the opportunity for some of our partners, if they have an event or an activity and they're looking for a space and we're not using it and it's available, to provide that.
And, and that'll actually segue right into my last question, so. Can you kind of define for me a little bit better, so, you know, for, for the folks that are here and, and, you know, myself, and then for folks that are watching at home? We've got this STEM Academy, see, you know, the, the academy is being run, who, who can go? I mean, is it, is it tied to the school system, is it tied to Youth and Social Services? If a Wallingford resident has kids in the school system, do they go, do they sign up, do they pay a fee? How, how does it work?
So the, the best way to describe it would be similar to what the Park and Recreation Program does with their programming. So we make it available to any resident in town, child or adult, depending on the event. And they have the opportunity to either come to an event that's free just by registering or paying the registration fee if it's a camp program that lasts a little bit longer. And if there is space available, it certainly would provide the opportunity for an outsider to participate if we could have that space, similar to what the Park and Rec Department does with some of their programs. But it would, the primary users would be Wallingford residents.
Right, so in other words, it's, some of it is provided for free as part of the programs. There's others that are, for lack of a better way, you, you pay to, to go to attend certain things.
Correct.
Now, if, if the cost or the fees are to a point, like I'm, I'm thinking of something you said earlier about like the Boys and Girls Club, who's something that we do there, I'm on the board of directors there too. When we have students or people that want to be part of the club, but they can't afford the, the money to be part of the programs, we have the ability to discount on a case-by-case basis or to offer free services. Do we have something similar for the STEM Academy? If there's somebody in town that, I'll use just a loose example, they get free lunch, there's a reason they get free lunch in the school system. If they wanted to go to something that was a cost-bearing class, is there a mechanism for them to apply for tuition? Or however it works, so they could get it for a reduced or free?
So we are currently in, in the process of doing that, we've been doing that for years. Uh, if there's an application that comes and, and Mr. Stone, who oversees the program, has that request come to him directly through the registration process? Because they handle that directly. Um, we will get that and then we will work to, to figure out a way to get them in. In some cases, we waive the fee completely, in other cases, it's been a partial payment.
And then, and then just the, the last part of my question for that, so then, once all of the local residents' needs, desires are fulfilled, you know, whether they pay or whether they get a discount, and there's five open seats, we allow other, other towns, other children from other towns to come in? Like if they went to Voag and they're in the town, if they wanted to go, they could, they could apply and take the empty seats at that point?
I think, that's a fair way to describe it. So I wouldn't say that we aggressively seek outside people, but if they hear about it through the grapevine or see the class because they happen to see the brochure, even though it's not particularly targeting them, and they ask if there's an opportunity, that's the policy that we run with. And if there's an opening, they would be available to participate.
And I, and I think that's fair, I mean, my, my mindset to something like that is, we basically asked or, you know, advertisers sent it out to the schools, to SCOW. Hey, we have two seats left, if somebody wandered in and said, hey, I heard about this, my friend's in it, can, can I pay the fee to sit in the class with them? Then we're okay with it because at the end, we'd rather fill a seat than leave it empty. And it sounds like that's what we would do.
Yeah, there's two bonuses, one is that we have another child in the event, which is a positive youth development event. And there's revenue that we generate that we're able to turn back to the program to just enhance it further down the road.
Okay, perfect, I, I, that answers all my current questions and unless something else comes up, I, I appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening all. Um, when I walked in here tonight, I was, um, there was a floor plan at my, my seat. Is this the current floor plan?
Uh, not right now, there's, uh, that's the spaces that will be used, the horseshoe shape for the, the computer, computers. That's what you're looking at.
Okay, so something's changed here.
Uh, that's, that's what is to be created by the hiring of the contractor.
That's what I meant, it was a bad question, I said current floor plan, I meant this is the intended floor plan.
Exactly.
Okay. So, thank you, it was really bad on my part, but, you know, I was looking at, how many square feet is this addition?
Uh, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we're not making the building any bigger, it's, uh, the footprint will remain the same. It's just, uh, what, what you see on that plan is the amount of seats that, uh, or computer stations that, that will be set up in those areas.
Okay, so.
If you're familiar with the building, the existing ramp, that used to be the cafeteria for the Senior Citizen Center, long time ago.
So orient me, because I, you know, I've been in the building, um, uh, where the ramp is now, which is adjacent to the senior center. Uh, where, where is that on here?
The, it's. No, there's no, there's, this isn't near the senior center.
So let me, I can probably clarify this for you, Craig, if you allow me?
Sure.
So if you're, if you're, uh, holding it and the word the ALT is in the lower right-hand corner, I just want to make sure we're oriented to the same place?
ALT.
Do you see that in the bottom corner?
I have A11.
Okay, well, let's go with A11, mine says ALT, so. Uh, let me just comb up and look to be sure.
Yeah.
So if you were to go to the, the left-hand wall from that diagram dead center, you'll see an open door? The left hand?
Yep.
So that is actually entrance to the existing SCOW area. So this is the back of the building, it's really not underneath it, it's in the back of the building of where SCOW actually exists. So it's part of the same building that SCOW is currently in.
Yeah, and that's, and somebody wrote on here SCOW building in this open white space on the left.
Correct, so that's the ramp that you were referencing, that door opens to the ramp. So as you go down the ramp, you can see that most of the area that's enclosed by the ramp is storage. Those are storage shelves, most of that area, because it's an enclosed area, you can see the other doors that lead in there, it's a secure space.
Can I just?
Sure.
Just orient myself, because if I recall correctly, that door and ramp is adjacent to a parking lot. Am I incorrect?
So that's not correct, Craig, it's not near a parking lot.
Yeah, so it's. At the top of the page, you'd be looking out over the community lake.
Is this? Yeah, this is the, it's the rear of the building.
So Community Lake is here, just like it says.
Yes.
Right, so the only parking, the only access point is this way. There's no parking, this is the building. This is the access, the other two buildings that were, that are, the building that's being demolished is here?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no parking, there's just a, there's an entryway.
Show me where's, where's the existing ramp? Is it here?
Right here.
Yeah, okay.
But this is the building, not parking, so the parking's way over here.
Yeah, it's the rear part, yeah, I got, okay. Okay, I, I'm oriented now, okay. So then, um, while we, um, I guess I'm talking with Henry, but I appreciate everybody being here. Um, thank you, Craig. So I'm looking at the scale on this. And it says that one quarter inch equals one foot, right? I don't know, the numbers in here don't add up, but I guess ultimately, um, it's not an expansion of the footprint, you're using, utilizing the existing. So that addresses one thing. Have we, with regard to the boathouse, have we, uh, had environmental testing done there?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any environmental concerns there?
There is asbestos in the building that will have to be abated as part of the demolition.
Okay. And I'm happy to hear that Public Works is doing the demolition because...
We're not doing the demolition.
Oh, I thought you were. Didn't somebody say that?
No, a contractor.
Oh, okay. I thought... I thought I heard that Public Works was doing demolition. But we don't have the ability to do that in-house?
It's not what we do. It's, you know, the abatement. We're... You know, if it was a shed or something, I would take that on. But I don't think we should be getting involved in something like this.
Okay.
And we're pretty busy with other projects.
What about the other two buildings? Are there environmental concerns there as well?
Yes, there is. And we've performed environmental surveys on all three buildings. And the abatement will be the responsibility of the contractor. And we do have a low bid on that, as I said before. It's $162,000 for all three buildings.
Yeah, I see that, and the numbers. Okay. Is this new space intended? I know there was some talk with Counselor Zandry about that SCOW would be using it from time to time when it wasn't being used by the STEM Academy. Did I hear that correctly? Okay. Welcome, Adriana. Is there any thought about the coalition perhaps moving into this space? Because I mean, we pay for their rent. You know, is that a consideration at all?
On the basis of what we need for space, what we would use for programming space, and what they would be potentially bringing in if it were possible, they are more of a standalone, permanent site where they have a presence in the community that they can access the community from and be highly visible from where they are at. As you know, I strongly support the idea of where they are located for the purposes of what they represent, which is a community coalition, and downtown is the center of the community. So philosophically, I think their way they need to be, practically speaking, to have them come in, set up, break down, set up, break down, and not have the stability of having a space where they could call their own to have people coming in and hold larger events, it would be problematic for the purpose for why they exist.
Well, I know I go by that where they are presently. You know, I see the lights out. It's not being used all the time. And if, you know, we're looking, you know, STEM Academy's not going to be using it all the time. SCOW's going to be using it sometimes. I'm just trying to think outside the box because I know the taxpayers are paying for a downtown storefront
Correct.
to be utilized. You know, it's not a business. It's not being used all the time. And I'm just talking a lot of money here.
I can appreciate that. I think disruption that would be caused for the coalition to moving in and out, in and out, in and out, I think they don't have the manpower or the organizational staff to pull that off on any basis.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering the questions. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Pardon me. I'm sorry. I was eating an M&M. Peanut. That was a product placement and I got 28 cents. Okay. In general, I have always... I'm very pessimistic or cynical about taking down a brick building. It always concerns me because I... Because you would expect that it's, you know, it's a strong, sturdy building that can be used for any number of reasons. And when we talk about, let's demolish a brick building, and I want to be sure that we have no use for it and it's in pretty bad shape. So let's talk about the building on the senior center property for a moment. Just tell me about it. Is it that bad?
Civil defense.
The old civil defense building?
The old civil defense.
Right.
I think it was a couple of years ago, we had a mini tornado go through Wallingford and it ripped the roof off of that building. And as you said, you stated, that is an old borough electric building. It's a totally masonry building. There's no sheet rock or anything like that. So any changes you want to make to a structure like that? You have the brick walls, could be bearing walls. It's not like taking out sheet rock and two-by-fours and changing the shape of a room or a space. And to create space and usability for a specific use there would be difficult. And I believe that the... I don't know if we had a structural engineer look at that. I don't know if we could even use that building again.
All right, so it's in... All right. Let me convince it. It's in that bad of condition. I understand.
One of the problems was there's no elevator. It's multi-story. So the ability to use the upper floors was always a question mark due to ADA requirements.
Oh, I'm sure that if we decided we had a use for it, it would require quite an investment to renovate it, make it usable for another purpose. But you know, we have departments that lease space. And I just, you know... I was hesitant when we said we're going to take down a building that looks like it's, you know, it's a pretty good... You know, it's strong. It just needs to be renovated. But I'll go along with that. I have an issue with the boathouse property. And this is what it is. When we... We secured it. There was discussion about, oh, why would we want it? What would we do with it? I know it was stated that it's nice that it is, you know, contiguous to the senior center property. And so provides for, you know, continuous area for potentially putting in a walking path at some point. Nice to have the property. And then there was some talk, well, what would we do with the building? At the time, I had suggested something and I still feel real strongly. I've always envisioned that property, that building, being used as some type of environmental educational center, for lack of a better term. You could look at it any number of ways, but it could... Someplace where people could go, students could go, people could go. And it would be a place to sort of experience the lake, the environment, the area, the habitat. And it could be set up in any number of ways as just a way station, if you will. Depends on how involved we want to get with developing it as such. And that would also go hand-in-hand with if we were to use it. We were to develop some type of walking paths from the senior center further along around the lake. It's a nice place to stop and sit and rest and do whatever you want to do. That's what I wanted to see done with that. We were talking at the time, other people that said, oh, I want to do this. I want to do that. And I said, well, when the time comes, I'm going to be ready to argue my case for that use. Well, we have never had a discussion about the use of that property. And now we're going to basically make it just an open lot. So I have multiple questions. One for the administration. Has there been any thought or discussion about how we would use this property now that we own it? And then we'll get to the building.
I think the discussions we've had certainly have identified a serious problem. One is the condition of the building, a couple of problems. And another real problem is the access, ingress and egress. It's a very narrow drive. Stonewall, I believe, on either side. As Mr. McCully pointed out, it's ledge. It's a very small parking area. I don't think you could get more than maybe three or four cars down there and be able to drive back out. So any use of that property for a general governmental purpose would be severely constrained with the lack of parking. So... But the building itself is just in terrible condition. I don't know how... And it's not laid out in a way that is easily accommodates any other kind of use. It's a caretaker building on one side and then kind of an open barn kind of effect in the other where the rowing...
It was a small house in the front. When you go down the driveway, you're basically going into the front door of a small ranch house or...
Right.
Or cape. I know I mentioned earlier that I... We haven't had any problems down there with vandalism and stuff like that. But all the plumbing, all the copper, rather, in the building was taken out by vandals. But other than that, I guess now there's nothing in there to steal. They stay away from it. And as the mayor stated, the parking would be... Trying to try and create any parking down there would be... Take some work.
Well, the answer to my first question appears to be, we haven't had any discussions or thoughts about what to do with the property. So get back to the building. I understand the condition of the building. I'm looking at it right now. I haven't had a chance to go inside, of course, because it would have been maybe nice to be able to take a look at it when this was being discussed. I'm aware of... Of the restrictions as it's laid out now. But again, we own the land between it and the SCOW Building, do we not?
I guess we do.
So if we want to limit ourselves to the available asphalt area on the site now, yeah, then of course. But we own all the land between it and the senior center. We own that land. So for example, if we came up with a use for this building, maybe this is not possible, but hasn't been discussed. You could run a driveway to the senior center. You could run a roadway. Perhaps we could put parking behind SCOW. And it's only a short walk to this. If it was an educational center, you might have a place, especially now we're knocking down a building, you might have a place for a couple of school buses to park and kids to walk through that path and get to what would be a nature, educational nature center. So if we restrict ourselves in thinking about the possible uses of this site based on the fact that it's a horrible driveway, I know I've driven down there and you couldn't park a lot of things there, well, of course, we're not going to have any use for it. But I think we need to look at the bigger picture. Then again, if we take this building down, we'll have an open spot. We could still do what I'm talking about. But then, would we have wasted any potential use of this building? Is it all... Isn't it... Am I wrong? Or is it... Isn't it like a couple of buildings cobbled together? In other words, could you not demolish all the wood structures? And wouldn't there still be a brick shell of the garage area, so to speak, the boathouse itself? Would that not be something that is usable?
There is a semi-foundation. The boathouse is a concrete floor, concrete walls.
And then brick, right?
Uh, wood.
So there's no brick there? It's just... All the walls are concrete?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. I mean, the area where the two little... That looks like little docks coming out?
Yeah.
That one rectangular, that's sort of a stone, a concrete building, is it not? And then the wood structures were built off of that?
Yes.
I just, you know, I could see you want to knock down... I don't see any... I don't want to see you spending money knocking down anything yet. I'd rather see us say, you know, maybe we can, we have a use for this and we'd knock it down when we're going to change it or renovate it. Use the area that's the concrete foundation and all. But maybe that's asking too much. I don't know. I don't think there's anything usable there? I mean, forget about this.
My personal opinion is to be demolished.
Let me pull back. Let me pull back.
That's totally my opinion.
Forget the driveway. Forget the limited parking. Leave that out of the picture. Just the structures that are there. There's nothing there that you could see us repurposing? As opposed to knocking it down and having to rebuild from scratch?
No.
No?
No.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wasn't an area I was going to go into, but it kind of sounds like repurposing buildings. It really is a shame on the old... The old brick building, that that's going to be demolished. I know the roof leaked and all of that, but you know, I go by that building. I've been down there. I've been in that building when it was in okay shape. The garages still seem to be in good shape. But you know, I think about the Central Office for Education. They're paying over $150,000, almost $150,000 a year in rent. And you know, in 10 years' time, it's over a million dollars. I would have loved to seen them go to that area. There's no elevator. Elevator can be put in. Anything can be done. But it wasn't even looked at. You know, we're going to demo the building. I know at the end of the meeting tonight, we're going to vote on it and it's going to be demoed. But again, what a shame.
Well, the building is full of asbestos and it's in dreadful shape.
I understand.
I walked contractors through that building. That building's in dreadful shape. And it was severely damaged when the roof got peeled off by the storm. It's in dreadful shape.
It might have been too little, too late. Maybe if we had looked at it just when the roof got peeled off and did something sooner, might have possibly could have saved the building. But that being said, the demolition, so the Wooding Building, we're looking at 51... The way the bid came in, it's $51,840 for the Wooding Building, $51,840 for the boathouse. And the old civil defense building is $58,840. And apparently this contractor, these bids came in in March and he sent the letter saying that he would hold the bids for a period of time. Comes to my main question, time. So if this gets approved tonight, which I'm confident that it will, and we give you the, you know, the go-ahead, the money's there for demolition, when do you push the button?
We would... Once we award the bid, get the necessary insurance documents through purchasing, we can give them the go-ahead to demolish the buildings. The chief's no longer needs... He used the Wooding Kaplan a little bit, but he no longer needs that. He has a new storage area.
Right.
So we're ready to go.
So basically, all the buildings are ready to go. So what would the procedure be after this evening? We approve the money, you contact, or is the mayor?
We award the bid. We formally award the bid. Purchasing, we get insurance, and we would set up a start date.
Okay. My concern is, you know, these figures came in March. The contractor was good enough to hold the figures, but I don't want to go too much... Things have a habit going on the Wallingford clock where it goes on for years. We'll be, you know, I don't want to talk about this next year. So...
Well, I can assure you that we will move on this immediately.
Okay, good to hear.
On my end, it's only paperwork, John.
Okay, all right. And as far as the SCOW Building goes with the STEM Academy, that this is just a great project, long time in coming. That STEM Academy, just real... I don't want to beat that up because it's been pretty well talked about. But my grandchildren attended that STEM Academy and they got a lot out of it and absolutely loved it. So it's a great project for the town. And again, thank you, SCOW. So that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. I kind of want to piggyback on what Counselor Letourneau was just talking about. Now, my children have participated in programs on the weekends after school at SCOW and with STEM since before they were in kindergarten, whether it was Spanish classes or a little Spanish summer camp or robotics or a Sphero or whatever. And the Connecticut STEM Academy, they've been to all those events, not just at SCOW, but at their own schools when the STEM, the Connecticut STEM Academy goes to those schools, to the Quinnipiac University campus that used to be Anthem. They've been all over, highly involved. And a lot has come out of this program. The robotics program alone, and last year they had one team that won a major state competition and set a regional record. And another team that ended up qualifying and competing in the world championships. I mean, these are just middle school kids that I'm talking about for this program. And that's providing them opportunities with the connections and the educational structure and leadership of Mr. Stone and other teachers, public school teachers that he's put together that work on his staff with SCOW's management and leadership. And with all the interns and the college kids and everybody, it's a phenomenal program. And as I said, they had attended programs before, whether it was weather and whatnot, the civil defense building. My kids are actually attending a program during that, not during the storm, but during that time period. The building is pretty much condemned. The building is pretty much condemned, right? It it was condemnable, the that Civil Defense Building, that thing we want to knock down. I mean, the amount of damage was incredibly, it's, I know it looks okay, you know, when you're looking at it from the parking lot.
Well, it's not condemnable in the sense that it could fall on someone.
No, no, but I mean, it's.
But it but it's it's virtually because of.
Yeah.
Oh, Henry can speak to it.
You have to go inside to appreciate.
It's horrible. And I I've looked in the windows and and I've I've talked to the the people and. It it's really, really bad. Um, so it's, do do we have a plan for that land? Or are we just gonna make it a parking area?
No, it's uh, it'll just be left. Uh, we don't need any more parking down there. It would be a grassed area.
Okay. Craig, you want to talk or sorry?
So I think that part of that discussion probably hasn't been finished, but. If you can imagine the increased use, we may need to look at whether or not we need more parking. Depending on what else is going on in the senior center, because that is, a lot of that space is shared. So assuming that we don't do any major events while the senior center is open, and usually those would be in the evening anyway. Shouldn't be that much of a problem, but I think we just need to be clear. That we have the necessary.
It'll be available, yeah. The Boathouse, I I remember the discussion when we procured it and and Counselor Testa's idea about the environmental. Center, our use and and right, and I think, you know, Mr. Stone was probably standing on the property line waiting for us to vote to approve, to accept the property. And then he ran down there to take a look at it. Um, and I and we had talked, and I talked to. Multiple people in the room about that building, and I think the the universal agreement after everybody kind of took a good look. At the space was that it wasn't gonna work. For safety reasons and just what was there now. And. Um, and that was before we even had the opportunity to look at this space now that's before us. So there was a need, there was almost a desperation for for SCOW and the Connecticut STEM Academy to grow. And even in those desperate times, they did not jump all over the Boathouse. Even with the uh po- possible academic environmental uses that you could have coupled with it. Um, I think it's great that all these programs and departments have been able to coordinate this. I know this has been kind of years. Kicking around and talking and SCOW, the police department, Public Works is working on it, Youth and Social Services, Connecticut STEM Academy. It just goes on and on and on. Um, I'm glad that it all could work out. Um, I'm excited. Uh, I've been to some of the the programs and the the grants when SCOW receives a grant, you know, we're in this other meeting room. And there's this whole walled off area that's that just seemed like a wasted space. And I know it was being used by the police department. But it seemed like it was right there and SCOW, the ben- the building and the organization has become such a community draw and center. It's kind of seemed like there could be a better use. We've already got all these people coming here. Maybe we can use this space for those people. And now we'll be able to. And Chief, I hope that the your new space. High One Kaplan, which I'll be glad to sit down, will um will be more practical for you guys. So, great job to everybody that worked on it, wholeheartedly supported, and uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor?
It just, I want everyone to be clear, the demolition of the Civil Defense Building does not include what had been or is now. Now and soon to be. Moved. The sign shop, that is a separate building and that will remain, and that is planned to be used for storage for. The the community theater. So all of that building over there, there is a separate building that was a sign shop, and that's going to stay. So really, you have an adjustment and and an effort by multiple departments to. Reuse, to invest in, to uh coordinate. Their activities so that we've cleared some area, will eliminate some area. But it should be a far better environment for everyone's uses in the future.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stone, I noticed that you moved while we were talking about this. Did you want to speak? You moved closer to us. Did you just want to feel part of this experience or? Yeah, if you could approach the mic if you'd like to speak.
I was, I was moved by uh, I was moved by Mr. Testa's comments in terms of the environmental education potential and aspect. And uh, partly why I moved because I didn't want you to get hung up on necessarily the boathouse structure. Being the end all for an effort like that. Uh, Mr. Turner and I, uh, Mr. Gall, I concluded, we've all had. Numerous conversations in terms of environmental education possibilities. I know that years ago, there was a study done out at Bertini Park with the King's Mark, I think. And uh, we've had conversations, comments, uh, ideas, plans, so I just want to reassure you that. Don't don't think of the program itself being a walled off program. The the intention of that program too is to include environmental education aspects as well, so.
Thank you. Uh, any members of the public wish to speak? Uh, Mr. Knight? You were eclipsed by Mr. McCully, based on my view, so I just saw your arm.
I couldn't, I couldn't resist the opportunity to belabor this issue. Having had the opportunity for many years to be on that other side. I I I'm delighted from what I hear about the general sentiment. Regarding, especially regarding STEM and SCOW. To uh, Counselor Testa's. Comments regarding tearing down an old brick building. If it's any consolation. The SCOW slash STEM building is well over a hundred and twenty years, I believe. So all is not lost, Vinnie. It will last, it will continue to be uh, used and 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 when you think about it. A building of that age. Housing programs that are as modern and as. As relevant to today's society, such as the Spanish community of Wallingford and. The STEM Academy. I I would hope that that would uh, help ease your pain of seeing this other building. And I don't make light of it. I I appreciate that all of these buildings, uh. When you look at them, you wish you only, if only, if only, especially I look at John Letourneau, that that he's. He's, he's in pain right now, I can tell. But having said that, um, thank you for your support of SCOW. I have no doubt that uh. That uh, what what is planned is gonna be an exciting expansion and uh. I'm, I know both organizations, once they've uh, moved in, seen the renovations and so forth. Will anxiously await your your being there to see him reopen. And thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Mr. Walworth, come forward, please.
Good evening, John Walworth, twenty eight Aurora Drive. I probably have a a question and. A recommendation. Could you just read real quickly the. Line items in that budget that totaled to five hundred and. Fifty thousand, and I I apologize that I'm late in viewing this, but I I'm sure you have three demolition. Costs and then a renovation cost and maybe one or two others. Is that? Too long to uh, ask for?
You want the three demolition costs first?
Sure.
Yeah, we don't have the demolition costs broken down. We just have them lumped at one sixty two.
I I.
Yes, my bill, I think they, I said something about my building.
Okay, the boathouse. Fifty one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
If you could come forward, Mr. McCully, the microphone's not picking up. Thank you.
Demolition of the boathouse, fifty one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Civil Civil Defense Building, fifty eight thousand eight hundred and forty. Wooding Kaplan, fifty one thousand eight hundred and forty. Total is a hundred and sixty two thousand two oh nine.
And then the remainder is the uh. SCOW expansion? Renovation?
Yeah, the SCOW, the renovation and the remodeling of the SCOW is three hundred, almost three hundred thirty five thousand dollars. And there's a. Uh, for the fixtures and shelving, et cetera, inside the SCOW building is another twenty four thousand. These are estimates, obviously, so.
Sure.
And uh, we just left about five percent of the uh, construction, uh, or the remodeling for contingency, that's about sixteen thousand.
Just as an aside.
The estimate, the the construction is not an estimate.
Because our bids.
That's, that's, I'm sorry, that is actually a bid that's in, that's before us now.
Having uh, worked on a couple billion dollars worth of projects. Five percent might be a little shy. You might be surprised.
Yeah, we 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 thought, we thought so too, but um, that's, that's what we're gonna go with. We're gonna try that, yeah.
My, uh, first of all, I support. Everything that you can do for Spanish Community Wallingford, having been involved in looking at their programs and in fundraising. I I think that's a great program for our town. I I would strongly urge the council to. At some appropriate time. Discuss the feasibility of a public buildings. And grounds committee that reports to the council. That works with Public Works, which works with these. I won't ask you when Wooding Kaplan was purchased. Nor will I ask you when this storm took over the roof of CD. Civil Defense Building. Or what year we bought, I and I read about it when we were negotiating with Cho for the Boathouse. But I've heard comments tonight like. Gee, I wish I knew sooner. It's too bad we didn't look at it then. It's, it's, I I'm just seeing this continuously. We we need to be better stewards of our buildings and grounds. That doesn't take away from the people in this room who work very hard, who are very busy being pulled fifteen different ways. My point is. I think there needs to be a report to the council. That gives them an idea of what's coming up, what other uses were considered and were rejected and why. I I urge that you put this on an agenda item for down to discuss in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? There being none, I bring it back to the council. Uh, there is a motion on the floor, Counselor Letourneau.
Mayor, I just want to go back to your comment about the the um. The Civil Defense Building, so. The building that's attached to it, the garages that are there, that's gonna stay?
There's nothing attached, there's no garages attached to the Civil Defense Building. It's one structure. It's a brick structure.
It's a brick structure.
The police. The the police department's traffic division. Is a small brick building to the north of that building.
Right.
And that that was used by police. It's no longer used by them. It's used by the the town's theater group now. That will.
Yet, not yet.
Not yet, you're right. Not yet, it will be. And uh, but there's no garages attached to that building.
Okay, I thought that was a long row of of at one time used for garages or. Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was attached and he's showing me that it's it's detached. But um, okay, so that clears that up and. To, yes, to Mr. Knight's comment, yes, I am in pain with with old buildings coming down. And, you know, to Mr. Walworth's comment that, you know, yes, it probably could, some of these. Could have been reused, I don't know. All I know is if I was a building in Wallingford and I was over a hundred years old. I'd be scared as hell. Because it's just a matter of time before I get taken down for whatever reason. And we just don't look at reuse and everything has a cost. I understand that, everything has a cost. But I've been involved with restoration my whole life, my whole working career. I've worked on projects from the Newport's mansion, Newport Mansions to to uh. The Ringling Museum in Florida to City Hall Park in New York. And I saw some pretty, pretty dilapidated buildings. That were able to be reused and re-adapted. Yes, there's a cost. But when you have. In town, when you have an entity spending. Over a hundred thousand dollars a year on rent. And I'm just rounding figures and I'm being very conservative with those figures. That we didn't even look at reusing that building, putting an elevator in. The bones of the building are good. The bones of the building are there, the brick and mortar is good, the wood is rotten, every, it can be done. It can be done. You know, in ten years' time. They're gonna be paying in rent well over a million dollars. Probably close to a million and a half in rent in ten years' time. And it it just would have been nice just to take a look at it, you know, we spend money to get consultants all the time. We we hired a consultant on the Wooding Building to to tell us whether it was in good shape or not. But we didn't do it to this building. I would have liked to seen a detailed report from an engineer saying, yeah, it's gotta come down. I understand. At that point, I understand. But. I didn't see the detail on that that I saw on the on the Wooding Building. But nevertheless, like I said, tonight, it's it's going to be, you know, it it's it's gonna happen, it's gonna come down, unfortunately. But it it, I agree with Mr. Walworth that, you know, at some point, we gotta start looking at taking inventory of what we have. And being better stewards. Of our of our buildings, new and old. And see what we can do for repurposing. So that's, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zandry?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Letourneau, you were talking about one point one million dollars. What was that in reference to again?
This is, uh, that's the um, uh, central office.
Oh, you're adding up a number of years of their rent over time?
Yeah, they're renting an office building on the Hartford Turnpike.
Right.
And, you know, they left Sheehan and and they they went downtown, they went that building for a while, rented that, and then. That became dysfunctional, so they moved over to uh, they the office building over there.
I I follow you now. I I I heard you talking about their rent and then you said one point one. I said, wait a minute, that's not what they're paying for.
I I rounded it off. I mean, it's, I I got the figure, it's it's uh. Hundred and forty seven thousand a year or something like that, yeah.
Okay, no, I got it. Thank, thank you for the clarification. I I all of a sudden I heard one point one million, I went, wait, what, what?
Yeah, well, over ten years.
Okay, yeah.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau? Maron?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Cervone?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, thank you very much for all of your work on this and. Onto item eight. Uh, Counselor Shortell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this item, there are actually two things. Uh, that both we, I think we agreed, both would require a workshop to open up our rules. So I'm just gonna, I just really very quickly want to. Put them both in context. Because I don't necessarily support one of them, and that's why, uh, but I think we should talk about it. So the first one that I do support is involving training on. Uh, ethics and FOI for the council. This came up during ordinance committee and a resident actually brought this up as we were reviewing the town's code of ethics. That there should be something formalized that counselors periodically should go through some kind of training. And so I thought that was a good suggestion and I promised to bring it forward. I'm not sure exactly how we word that. I'm not sure exactly how that looks, and that's what the workshop is for. So that's. I'm in full support of that, and I hope to make, we can find a way to make that work. The second. The second item on here involves dialing into council meetings if we can't be physically present. I'm not so sure on that one, but this was another thing that came up in the fall and it actually came up because I think of an executive session. There was somebody who couldn't get there and, and that's where, that was the specific context. Um, I think we should talk about this as somebody, I know there's several of us, Councilors Zandry, Councilor Marone, myself, that, that travel for work, can't always be here. Um, so I think we should talk about it. I'm not sure functionally how it would work in terms of, you know, technology. I know that the PUC has done this in the past. I don't know what their rules are, procedures. I have reservations about it. Um, and I think we should talk about it both ways. Executive session, I think, is one way, or it might be easier to do, but versus a general meeting. So I just wanna talk about it. So that's, that's the context for what, why I put this on the agenda to have us uh, at some point in the future, talk through this via workshop. I know we're approaching holidays, so I don't know if we can even get this in before the new year, but anyway, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Laffin just waved at me.
Thank you. I was gonna say with January eighth, I think that's gonna be too crazy with the holidays.
Yeah.
Being realistic.
Yep.
Um, all right, so that we have a meeting that night, so piggyback it with the meeting either before or after, whatever's, well, I mean, I couldn't, it's, it's hard for me to get here before six, let alone like six-thirty, let alone six.
We can schedule it to start after the regular.
Right, so that's, that's what I would throw out there before we all talk about this for twenty minutes before getting a date mentioned, but.
I like that. Councilor, Councilor Zandry.
Um, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, just my, my overall thoughts and, and maybe as part of the thoughts of question, I mean, I guess I, I understand the sentiment of, of why we might wanna dial in to a meeting, because, you know, a lot of the times, you know, even though I might come with a, with a predisposition to maybe go one way or the other on a topic, sometimes you hear some conversation in the room that changes your mind. I mean, definitely when I miss meetings because I'm away at work, there's, there's almost no impact to me watching it, watching the replay. I mean, cause obviously you can get all the information that you need from the session. I, I guess the only part that becomes a a factor is, you know, gee, I would have liked to have voted whether yes or no. I mean, I, I make the assumption that unless you're in attendance, you can't cast a vote. You can't write a letter to the chairman and say, I'd like to cast a vote beforehand. You have to be actually physically here. I, I make that assumption and I kind of offer that. Is there, is there a way to vote beforehand? I'm gonna be absent, so I'd like to vote yes or no?
Uh, I, I don't think there is, but, you know, I, this is something that I think we could probably flesh out in the, in the rules workshop.
Yeah, I mean, again, that would be another thing for the conversation, because I mean, I, I definitely, I, I, I definitely think, especially in this day and age with the technology that's available and, and the desire, the desire to, to serve and try and do our jobs well. I, I don't think there's a single person that sits up here or that has sat up here or that will in the future that likes missing these meetings. I mean, sometimes it's one thing if life happens, it's another thing if work happens. And so you kinda get caught up in that. When you're traveling, you're not gonna make it home or whatever the case might be. So, you know, in those scenarios where, especially if it's something critical, I mean, I look at, sometimes I'll look at the agenda and go, I, I'm lucky, this, there's gonna be just, there's nothing, there's nothing actionable, there's gonna be discussions, stuff's gonna be voted on the next time, so I can watch the replay and I'm usually good to go for that meeting. But, you know, when you've got those nights where there's going to be something voted on, especially in a situation where it might be something contested. If it's something that's close, like tonight with the SCOW thing, and that was gonna go almost if there was only five of us here. But there's gonna be some point in time where something critical comes up and it's gonna be a, a four-by-four vote, because somebody missed a meeting. And, and that's, that's unfortunate if we don't have another way to handle it. So it might be just more food for thought, even if we, we can or cannot dial into it and/or is it something that we can legitimately cast a vote for beforehand?
No, I, I agree. I mean, I agree, and I think that's why I was splitting out the two scenarios. Executive session being one scenario and a regular meeting. I just figured if we're discussing executive session, we might as well discuss it across the board. Personally, I'm against it in a regular meeting. I think if you run for this office, you either show up or you don't. And I totally agree, and you're gonna miss out. Executive session, though, to me is a little different because it, that or even our gatherings that we have, because there is no voting. So there's no vote, you're just, it's just informational, and that could be information that might be helpful down the road. And I, again, I don't know how that would work functionally, you know, do we all have to you know, dial in the Chairman Cervone's conference line, or do we, you know, someone holds up their phone? I mean, I have no idea, but I, I don't disagree with you. I'm just putting it out there, since it came up once, it'll come up again, you know?
Makes sense. Thank you.
Councilor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, January eighth is fine with me. Uh, if I could just briefly, um, you know, I'm against this call-it-in situation, mostly because, you know, how many times do we get here and we get new information? You know, and, and there has been times where my vote changes or I have a different look at something because I got the information when I walked in this room. And it's really not fair to the public if I called in my vote prior to having all of that information. So that's of concern, but I share exactly what Councilor, um, Shortell was, was saying. But then even executive session, I don't think it's appropriate. Um, you know, unless we have rules that, you know, nobody else can, you know, because executive session is us, so, you know, I'm in the car traveling to Hartford. You know, can I dial into executive session while I got two other, you know, legislators in the car with me? Or something, you know, I mean, that, that wouldn't be appropriate. Uh, that would have to be part of the rules, have to be considered, but, you know, I, you know, I got elected to sit here and to debate and talk about things and to vote on them, and I think that's the way we should do it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it sounds like January eighth will be the date. And, uh, we'll have it after the regular meeting. And if there is nothing further on the agenda, then a motion to adjourn is appropriate.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.